Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Macomb Township Zoning Board of Appeals. The day is September the 5th, the time is 7:00 PM, and I'm going to call the roll, or ask our secretary to call the roll.
Will do, Mr. Chairman. Member Piper?
Here.
Member DeCosta?
Present.
Member Posey?
Here.
Chairman Tuckfield?
Here.
And Secretary Slosson. All members are present.
Thank you, Ms. Slosson. Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you guys can stand with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we will move on to item number three, which is the approval of the agenda items. Is there any motions on tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. DeCosta to approve tonight's agenda, is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Slosson, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That item carries. Item number four is the approval of the previous meeting minutes. This would be the meeting on August the 1st, 2019. Are there any corrections for the set of minutes before we take it to a vote?
Chairman Tuckfield, I would just like to note that the minutes included Patrick Maher as being present. We're going to make that correction. Also, a couple typo errors. Other than that, the meetings are, the minutes are ready for approval.
Very good. Do I have a motion to approve the amended minutes for August the 1st, 2019?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Posey, is there any support?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Piper. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. With that, we'll move on to old business, item 5A, which is several variance requests. This is tabled from our last meeting to give the petitioner some time to bring some information back. Before we get started, too far, the first variance, which would be the variance from section 10.0323(c) dot 2e, which is with regards to the parking spaces on the site, believe is being withdrawn from the petitioner. And before we proceed, I just want to check with Mr. Assorti, do we need to do anything besides noting it? Do we need to make a motion on this, or how do you want us to proceed with this?
Well, it's on the agenda to approve, right?
It is.
It's printed, that shows that it's withdrawn, so you shouldn't have to take any action in it.
So...
And you guys, and the board obviously can't take any action on that item or hear anything regarding that matter tonight, now that it's been approved.
Very good. So, we're going to proceed past the first variance request, which is tabled, and I'll just make a note for the board and for the public, that is no longer on the agenda, and we are not going to be discussing it this evening. With that being said, there is two variances on the agenda for this evening that we are going to hear. Those are from section 10.03571 and 10.0323 point e point 8, and those are on permanent parcel 0822400023. This item is tabled from our last meeting to give the petitioner time to gather some information with regards to the easement. At the last meeting, we did summarize the findings from the planner. I believe he had generally recommended denial on the parking, but said that had some comments for us if we were to find a variance for the fence. So with that, I'm going to proceed to ask the petitioner to come up and give us any information or updates since the last meeting. And if you could, sir, my apologies, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Shootarski, S-Z-U-T-A-R-S-K-I.
Thank you, sir.
It's an easy one. With 814 Development, 3221 West Big Beaver Road, Suite 111 in Troy, 48084.
Thank you.
So at our last meeting, you had asked us to take a look into the couple of the items we've withdrawn, the parking variance request. And related to the fence and the hardship that we were finding, it was from lack of response at that time from Consumers Energy. Over the last month, we've been able to communicate with consumers, and they've responded. We had initially requested from them approval for the masonry wall with the foundation and footing along the north and west property line. They denied that request, infringing upon their easement rights. They did, however, give us an approval for the privacy fencing with post holes for the north property line and along the west. So we're back before you this evening requesting the variance for providing the six-foot privacy vinyl fence.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any questions for the petitioner from the board?
So I'm assuming Consumers is saying no footing, linear footing, but they will accept post holes?
That is correct, yes. They waived any liability for any damage for any work that they have to do, and will take full ownership and responsibility for that.
I think I brought it up the last meeting. Have you looked into the different types of other concrete or masonry walls that only take a footing, not a linear, or it's take a, I guess it'd be a post hole or a footing instead of a long linear foundation?
Well, to some extent, but in the conversation with consumers, the issue of a masonry wall is prohibitive for them, and even with smaller footings in that scenario, that poses the same concern for them in terms of access across that, as would a full masonry with a full footing.
The reason I ask that is because what I'd referenced last meeting was, and I've used these before, they're posts, concrete posts, that go into a small post hole or a footing, and the slats can be removed. So if you needed to get access, you could actually physically lift up 12 inches, so slats out, put them back in off one break, you can easily fix it. That's why I asked about that, because to me, that would seem like a solution to the consumers' issue, as well as still maintaining the masonry wall.
I did have a question, and this is to refresh my memory, so I apologize, I should've had more notes on this. You were looking at putting a fence along the entire perimeter, along a portion of the perimeter?
Well, our request would be for the entire perimeter, only in that it would be aesthetically similar, right? Instead of having a vinyl fence and then a section of masonry. We would be willing to do the masonry on, I guess it would be the west portion, south of the easement to 22 mile, if that would please the board.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
Not for the petitioner, actually, I have a question for Mr. Assorti. If Consumers Energy has denied the ability to put the masonry wall along the perimeter of the property, and we were to not grant the variance and request that they put a masonry wall, does Consumers Energy trump the board's decision?
Yeah, right. So, we can say that it's permitted, but then the rights that the consumers have relative to that property would control. Just like if we would permit, if you were in a, if there was a home, and the zoning board granted, for instance, a one-foot setback encroachment, and we granted that, and then the homeowners association that has restrictions said, "No, you're not allowed to do it," those rights recorded in that agreement would trump anything that we would have. I don't know that they necessarily trump them, but they would be enforceable for that entity.
So let's, if we could just play out the case scenario for the sake of the residents that are here this evening. So if we were to deny the request and require them to put the masonry wall up, which Consumers Energy has told them they cannot do?
Correct.
They can still move forward and put the vinyl fence up? Am I right? Am I understanding that correctly?
I'll skip there somewhere.
So if the, if we were to say they have to put a masonry wall up?
Right.
And Consumers Energy is saying they cannot?
Right.
So then what's the next step?
They can't put the fence up.
The only thing I mentioned, looking at it, I mean, I suppose they could put the, they could put the masonry fence inside the easement to the parking lot side of it. Of course, then, we have a potential issue of a strip of landscaping that has to be maintained outside of a fence that's on their property line. So if the easement is 20 feet, I suppose you could put it on the inside of the 20 feet, and then they would have to maintain that other strip. I'm not sure that that's practical, but I suppose it is a possibility.
And probably inconsistent with...
Everything else we have.
Yeah, right.
Any other questions? Seeing none at the moment, I will open it up to the public. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Jim and Marcy Glefki, 21707 22 mile road. I guess I'm a little confused on the easement for the fence on the north side. The easement does not go to the property line. So I'm confused as to why you can't build your masonry fence between the property line and the easement. I know it's offset. That easement is not a straight line down that property line either. That easement curves when it gets to my house and goes up to where the meter is. They do not have a straight easement to our house. It goes around, it goes around the AT&amp;T box, and I'm not positive exactly how far offset it is from the property line, but I know it does not start at the property line. So I'm confused as to why, I'm not sure what the issue with the cement wall is. There's plenty of room to build one without going in Consumers easement.
If the petitioner could answer that, I'm looking at this, I'm not seeing the easement called out specifically, although I thought I had. Is it up, do you understand it's up to the property line, or is it spaced off?
No, it is, it is to the north property line, per the recorded easement. There is some truth at the very east end. It does, just, just west of the sidewalk on Card Road, does dip down to the south. That runs about 40 feet, runs about a 45-degree angle. It's the three dashed lines.
Does it say how far that easement goes?
Yep.
Oh, I see what, I see where the easement is drawn. Yeah. If you could approach, I'd like to make sure I understand where it is. So is this, this portion right here?
That's correct.
So... That's the plan at easement, and as it is shown in the recorded document, which extends then the entire length of the property.
And let the record be shown, one of the petitioners came up and showed several of the board members where the easement sits on the plan. I'd be happy to have you see it on our drawing, if you'd like to see it as well.
I guess maybe we should have the gas line marked.
I'm not sure that it's the gas line that's a question, it's the easement.
Well, the gas line's in the easement, and I know that gas line is way off the property line. To my knowledge, that easement was not to the property line. It was offset like eight feet. They had another 10 feet of easement after that.
I understand, I understand.
Does it say where the gas line is located? Does it say that on the, on the print?
I'm not sure that where the gas line is located for us ends up making a difference. It's where the recorded easement is. We don't really have control over where the gas line is.
No, I understand that, but, I mean, the gas line would have to be in the easement, obviously.
Again, I'm not sure that it makes a difference for us. I understand practically what you're saying, but...
Yes, Mr. Slosson.
It does show it on our drawing within, within that easement, and you're correct, the gas line may be short of the north property line, but the easement is, we don't have control of the gas line. We have control, don't have control, I should say, over where the easement is located.
Well, I know for us, we would like the cement wall on ours, and we'd like to keep the 25-foot buffer that the ordinance states they're supposed to keep.
And to clarify, your property is on the west side of this parcel?
On the west side, yes.
Very good.
I mean, we don't want this retention pond any closer to our property than we have to. The ordinance states they're supposed to have a 25-foot buffer, and we would like to see that ordinance stay. I mean, these ordinances were put in place to protect people like us, and why a commercial development is being able to come right to our property line, you know, that's something that needs to be addressed through the township, because I think that's wrong. This whole, this whole development didn't fit here. These guys have jumped through so many hoops to get this development to go there. There's many other vacant parcels of land, very close to us, that would more than benefit having a daycare. This development just didn't fit there, and the township has jumped through so many hoops to get them there. You know, I hate to see you guys, you know, grant them a variance on an ordinance that's in place.
Chairman, if I can? If you could, I think we, I think we should take comments, and then I think you did have some things you wanted to mention, and let's handle it once the comments are done.
Sounds good. I guess just for the record, can we, can we ask why the parking was taken off the...
You can ask, it's not something this board is necessarily privy to. I...
Well, it was addressed at the last meeting, so I'm just, I'm just curious to how that disappeared.
They withdrew their application. I would imagine that if you were to call the planning department, they might have more of an understanding of what it is. Our planner is not here this evening, so I don't have that information.
Just for the record, that was already something that's been settled?
I don't know. It's, all I have officially is that they've withdrawn that petition for variance from our agenda this evening.
No, I guess we're just sick over this, pretty much. He ruined, they ruined a family? I guess that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, we're Steve and Mary Pittman. Live at 49101 Card, we're on the property north. Are you guys opposed to those flats, like he was talking about? I mean, that's masonry, what's the difference? You got a post hole in.
If you could, Steve, I recognize we're all here, but if you could address the board, I know it's formal, it's a little odd, but it's the way we're supposed to try to do it.
Yeah, I mean, that's a pretty good idea the man here had with the, you'd still be a masonry or a concrete fence, and if Edison needs to get in, they can just lift them up. I mean, they're going in with a backhoe anyways.
Are they saying the easement is right up to my fence?
If you could, ma'am, and again, I know it's formal, but if you could just...
The easement's right up to my fence, they're claiming?
Well, first off, if you could, and my apologies, but could you state your name and address for the record?
He did, Mary Pittman.
Okay, very good. The easement is up to the edge of the property line. I'm not sure where the fence, your fence is with relation to the property line. My understanding is it may be to your side.
Yeah, we're like six inches in.
Correct. But the easement would be to the property line, is my understanding.
And they can't do it right on the edge of the easement.
Consumers is not, is saying that they will not allow them to put a concrete continuous form...
And where is the statement from Consumers, just from him?
No, we have a letter here that they gave us.
Can we see it?
Will they allow that other kind of a fence?
He seems to indicate that they would not. I'm not sure that's something that we can effectively answer here tonight. We have, we have here tonight, for the record, we have two letters. I think Mr. Assorti here is going to give you a copy. One states, and I'm very much paraphrasing it, so we'll read through it, that they would not allow a continuous footing concrete wall, and the other one states that they would allow a post hole based fence. If I'm paraphrasing that...
That is correct, yes.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
Is that what you were referencing, a post hole fence?
Yeah.
And they will, it does indicate that they will allow that?
Well, I think they've indicated they'll allow a six-foot privacy fence.
That is correct.
They don't, they don't indicate material necessarily.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I just don't think it's fair to us to have our fence for their business.
No, they're gonna do the whole continuous...
So, if I could, to summarize what I'm understanding, your concern is a wood or metal or plastic fence as opposed to masonry?
Yes.
And also that they may piece it in as a, and use yours...
Well, yeah, last time we were here, they were talking like they were just gonna, oh, sorry, add on to our fence. But now they're saying they're gonna, whatever you guys decide, it's gonna be a continuous fence for the daycare?
I believe that they've indicated that, but that's something I want to ask more about when we're done with questions, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for any questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I had a couple of comments regarding the first speaker. We briefly touched on this last time. The 25-foot buffer, and correct me if I'm wrong, that is from the property line or the proposed fence in towards the property. So, there is going to be a 25-foot buffer because of the pond. It's just, in your situation, the fence gets installed on the property line, which is right next to your house. And I don't think, I don't know if this board has ever made a decision to move that fence in 25 feet, I think that's what you're asking? That's not their request at this time. So what, what we need to vote on is what's in front of us. So their request is for the type of material in the fence, not necessarily moving the fence in 25 feet, if that answers your question.
Oh.
Okay. I just want to make sure, like you said, I understand what you're saying, that fence is going to be right on your property line due to our ordinances, because it's commercial abutting residential, we need the six foot.
Right, no, I understand that. My, my only concern was keeping the pond another 25 feet away from my property line. I understand the fence is going to go up on the property line. I mean, there's, there's nothing, obviously, we can do about that.
Yeah, and I think the pond would qualify as a landscape buffer. I mean, it's actually more than 25 feet to the parking, it's going to be, I think, 60, I think we said.
I do think the distinction between a landscape buffer, as we typically define it, and the pond is less the distance and more vertical greenery. I think typically the green belt we're looking at, evergreens and things of that nature.
Every, yeah. I mean, every retention pond that I went and looked at is nothing but weeds and trees and a mess. And a six-foot wall next to our house is not going to hide that. It's, it's just not. So, you know, if they had a 25-foot landscape buffer between the wall and where the, where the pond started, that would give us another 25 feet of some, some kind of view. Unless, unless this, this thing is going to be maintained, but I doubt it. I mean, it's very hard to cut grass on these retention ponds. But yeah, I wasn't really looking to move the fence 25 feet. I mean, we fully understand it's going to go on the property line. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. And just for the record, you're Mr. Glefki, correct? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions?
I did have one more. With regards to the north part of the property, if we do agree to any type of fence here, we talked about it last time, and if Mr. Assorti can give us, give us some clarification on whether or not two fences can abut each other. I know the one neighbor indicated there's a six inches off. If we put another one, it's going to be essentially on the property line. Can two fences abut each other?
No, we, it's, it's gotta be... No, it, it needs to be on the property line, which they can do, or off, and if you put it, if they put it on the property line, then the other would be obviously non-conforming, right? Because we have three-foot requirement on the line.
So we could approve a still one on the property line?
Correct.
There is to just be non-conforming.
Right. Well, I don't know that you need to approve it. It's permitted, yeah.
Yes.
They would not be forced, so, with non-conforming, they would not be forced to take theirs down, though, right? That's my question.
I'm not going to answer that.
Any other questions or comments? I would like to clarify a couple things. The first one, you had mentioned, and we talked about it, I think, one of the petition, or the residents commented on it, I just want to circle back. You'd be willing to do one fence along the entire property line and not, you're not asking to do portions of fence and leaving the neighbor's fence as part of the division?
Well, and quite honestly, we would be able to do whatever the board, whatever pleases the board. So if you want us to go full span and then come back down the west property line, that's what we had in mind, and if it doesn't, so we don't create a non-conforming use for Mr. Pittman, then we could do from the eastern property line to the western edge of, or the eastern edge of his fence, and then pick it up at the western end and wrap around the corner, if that would please the board.
Understood. And then, with regards to the detention pond, I was going to call it a retention basin, making a mistake there. Currently, it looks like there's roughly 10 feet, both on the east side and the west side?
Yes.
And forgive my lack of understanding about how to properly design these. Can that pond be pushed any further to the east and maintain its usefulness?
It would not. That 10-foot wraparound, that was a direction from Department of Public Works, that, that's a clear zone. We have to keep that clear, and you can see in the southwest corner of the parking lot, that's for their access to get in and maintain, and then for any maintenance vehicles to get in and clean and maintain that portion of the parcel.
So in order for us to maintain a non-detention basin, green belt to the east of the west property line, I think I got all that correct, we would have to push an additional 10 to 15 feet to the east in order to maintain that as a non-detention, a green belt, even if it had no plantings in it?
Are you saying if it were just open space?
Yes, if you want to make open space, you'd have to push it at least another 10 feet. I don't remember if our green belt was 10 or 15 feet, or, pardon me, 20 or 25 feet in this zone, but you'd have to do either 10 or 15 feet east in order to make that.
That is correct.
It's 25.
I think it is 25, too.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, the detention pond, those, are those required measurements that the county wants for that, for that size?
I believe that the detention basin is determined by the public work, Public Works Office for the county. I think there's some other department or other divisions, but they, I think they, they have to approve the specifications based on the size of the lot and the runoff.
That is correct, yes.
It's not a question that anybody likes getting asked, but if we were to not allow you to put in, if we were, if we were to deny the variance request with regards to the buffer, do you have any other solutions in that regard?
In terms of...
In terms of being able to function with the property.
That would really hamstring us with, because, you see where the play areas are as well, so that's also a state license size, so we are at just slightly above. We're required to have 10,000 square feet, we have 10,999 for play area space for the students. That would run us into a state licensing issue, and it would effectively kill that design, yes.
Another question, do you have the ability to put any type of green belt on the west side of the, of the property?
I don't know exactly where. So we've sized that detention bond, pond based on Public Works and the calculations that are required to meet the needs of the impermeable surfaces on the property. Quite honestly, we would go smaller if we could, because it's pricey to put that in, that's not the reason. But it would be very hard pressed to do landscaping on that, on that segment of the property.
Very good, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Assorti, can you, can you possibly confirm, is the ordinance indicate that a, is it a 25-foot buffer that's required? Do you know?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I, unless there's any further questions or comments, I would bring it back to the board for... Typically, we don't allow comments at this point, but I will allow it if you could keep it under, under a couple minutes, and if you could come to the microphone and state your name and rec, name and address for the record.
Steve Pittman, 49101 Card. I'm on the north side of the property. I don't want them hooking up to my fence, no how, no way. I don't want to assume any kind of responsibility for those children, since it being my fence, if they jump or went through the gate of the chain link and got injured somehow, wouldn't that make me liable?
And I have another question, too. Buffer on the west side, why isn't there a buffer on the north side, too?
It's understood. I believe they're asking for the variance on both sides.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Posey?
Chairman Tuckfield, I don't believe that they were, did I misunderstand? Are you looking to tie into their fence in any shape, form, or way?
No, we are not.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, I understood they were not doing that, so I wanted to make sure we were all clear.
He just said a few minutes ago, he was wanting to hook on from the east and the west.
And for the record, one of the residents mentioned that the petitioner said that they might want to hook on from the east or the west, if I'm correctly echoing her statements. One thing I'd like to do before we actually go to motions, if I could, and I do not have my packet from last meeting, so I apologize. Can someone hand me Patrick's, the planner's recommendation? I just want to read out the recommendation.
Mr. Chair, if I can, let me give you the information on the double fencing. If I can, let me give you the information on the double fencing. So, our ordinance says that double fencing is strictly prohibited. No fence may be erected closer to three and one-half feet, and I apologize, I said three, but it is three and one-half feet. From any other fence, such parallel fencing with three and a half, one-foot spacing shall only be permitted by the building official in cases where an existing fence cannot practically service the intended needs of the applicant, which is, I think, I think what you guys are looking at, and especially when we have a property owner that's not interested in abutting the situation.
So, let me figure out how I can word this so you can answer the question. If we are, if we entertain a variance request that allowed the petitioner to put a fence along the entire length of the property, that is not granting them the right to build it, per se. It's just saying that we would accept it in lieu of a concrete fence if it was allowed-
Correct.
-by the building department.
Correct.
Okay.
Still has to meet all other code provisions and every, every other requirement of the township.
Understood. And I assume the board follows that. Before we go any further, we did have a planner's recommendation that I'd like to read again, since Mr. Maher is not here, and I think it's pertinent to the discussion, and I'm going to read it in its entirety. It does include comments with regard to the parking, which is no longer valid, but I believe the points are tight enough entwined. I don't want to pull something out that I shouldn't. So, this is from Patrick Maher, who is the acting planning consultant for the township. The proposed parking variance does not provide a practical difficulty, but rather a rationale for lesser parking based on the use itself. This would warrant a banked parking agreement, but perhaps does not meet, meet the criteria for a variance. If the use changes in the future, no room would be present to provide the additional parking. At a minimum, the applicant could provide the planning commission with a banked parking proposal showing adequate parking will fit on the site for general office use. If the ZBA finds that a practical difficulty exists on the site due to the easement and pond maintenance being in the way, we would highly recommend the entire fence on the north property line be replaced with an industrial-rated vinyl fence. Respectfully, Patrick Maher, et cetera. I just want to make sure that we have the recommendation out, so we remember it as Mr. Maher is not here to comment on it this evening. That, I will bring it back to the board for comments, questions, or motions. I would remind everyone, if you make a motion, please make sure you state any reasoning you have for it, so that we have it properly documented.
Mr. Chairperson, I'll make a motion. Should we make them separate?
I would like to make them separate, if you could, yes.
I will start with section with regards to the, to allow for a six-foot-high vinyl fence where a six-foot-high masonry wall and a landscape buffer is required. This is under section 10 dot 03571. My motion would be to deny the variance, and that's basically based on the fact that I brought up the solution for a different type of masonry wall. I'm not sure vinyl is the way to go with commercial abutting residential. We've heard from some residents that some of them feel the same way, but that would be my reasoning for, for denying this variance.
So, to clarify, so I understand the motion, you, you are recommended, recommending denial based on the material being requested?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
I second the motion.
Motion by Mr. DeCosta, seconded by Ms. Posey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay, nay. That motion passes, and that variance is denied. Are there any other motions?
Mr. Chairperson, if I could, with regards to allow a six-foot-high vinyl fence where a six-foot-high masonry wall and a landscape buffer is required, this is under section 10 dot 0323 dot E dot 8. My feelings are the same on this one. I feel that a masonry-type wall with the post holes would be more sufficient for a commercial-to-residential environment, so I would make a motion tonight to deny this variance request.
Motion by Mr. DeCosta. Is there any support?
I'll second it.
Support by Ms. Posey. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay, nay. That motion carries, and that variance was denied. Thank you very much for coming in, sir.
Thank you.
That brings us on to new business. I don't believe we have any new business this evening. With that, I will move on to item number seven, which is public comments on non-agenda items. If anyone has comments on non-agenda items, please come forward to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, and give any comments you might have. Mr. Glufke? Yes, if you could.
I'm not sure if this is allowable, but I just have a question on rezoning. Who was allowed to rezone property? I mean, doesn't the property owner have to do that? By state law?
No.
No. So, I can go anywhere and propose?
No.
Okay, so, can you enlighten me on how that works?
You have to have an interest in the property.
Okay. But you don't have to be the owner?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, that was Mr. Glufke. I believe he gave his address earlier in the meeting. Any other comments? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion and bring it to ZBA member comments. Are there any comments from the members?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to say that it was brought up this evening that the twenty-five-foot buffer was important to some of these residents, because we do have an ordinance, and it's in there for a reason when there's commercial budding up to residential, and I, I agree with that as well.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments?
I would say one other thing, again, about the twenty-five-foot buffer. I do see, you know, some practical difficulties with eliminating that or partially eliminate. So, just be aware that they could bring this back in front of us if they want to get rid of that, but, you know, it's, this is on, on their shoulders now with how they want to proceed, so.
Will we get notified?
Yes, any action, I believe, and Mr. Assorti, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone within three hundred feet of the variance request does get notified.
Correct.
Obviously, both of you would be. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll go on to planning director comments. The planning director is not here this evening, but I would ask Mr. Assorti if he has any comments, seeing as he's semi-acting as planning director for us at the moment.
I'm fine, I don't have any comments.
Very good. With no further comment, I would ask for a motion of adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Posey, is there any support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Lawson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That item passes, and we are adjourned.